Good evening and welcome to this Collingswood Educational Advocacy Group Candidate Forum. We're really happy to have all of the candidates here for tonight. Kate will be coming in just a moment, the president of CEAG, to introduce everybody. But I'm Jen Rossi, Vice President of CEAG, and I just wanted to go over a couple of housekeeping rules that we have here for our Zoom meeting. This session is being recorded. If you don't want to be seen on video or by other participants or in the recording, please turn off your video using the Zoom Stop Video button. All participants, except for the speakers and moderators, should be muted. Please add your questions to the chat panel so that way we can make sure we can have time for everybody's questions. The link for the recording will be sent to registrants within a day. So if you had signed up and you may have to leave, we'll be sending out a link so you can watch it later. The chat will be saved by CEAG. So please do not post sensitive information in the chat panel, including to other attendees of this event. So if you don't want it said publicly, please don't put it in the chat panel. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Kate Delaney, President of the Collingswood Educational Advocacy Group.
All right, thanks, everyone, for being here, for joining us for this event. Thanks especially to our four candidates. We really appreciate you coming out to answer questions from the community. We appreciate your candidacy, especially right now, in a very difficult time for everyone, for schools. So it's exciting that we have, you know, this occasion to have a conversation about the future of our school district. So again, thanks for being here and talking with us. So for format, we, as Jen said, we're going to begin by hearing from the candidates briefly. In the interest of fairness, we're just going to go alphabetical order. We have a lot of candidates that begin with that last name, beginning with C. And then we will, after we hear a short intro from the candidates, we'll go through questions. We did receive a lot of great questions from the community in advance, so we'll start with those. But anyone that is here at the meeting now, feel free to add to the questions to the chat, as Jen said. Rhodes is going to be our timekeeper, and he is going to subtly interject Rhodes' phone to tell us when it's time. So again, we're going to give the candidates a minute each to tell us a little bit about themselves, their platform. And then we'll get to questions. Candidates will have a minute to answer if a candidate wants to jump in rebuttal or, you know, comment for another 30 seconds, they can do that. And we're going to keep this to an hour, so we're going to get to as many questions as we can. But my feeling is that like after an hour on Zoom, our brains start to melt. So we're going to cover as much as we can within the space of an hour. So without further ado, we'll start with those intros. And alphabetically, Kevin Carey is first. So Rhodes will start the time countering. Chief Carey, if you could start telling us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll do that for all the candidates.
Okay, Rhodes, whenever you're ready, sir.
I'm ready.
Hello, let me start by thanking the CEAG for putting this together and to my running mates and fellow community members for participating this evening. My name is Kevin Carey. I'm a Collingswood native and 2000 Collingswood High School graduate. After graduation, I went on to earn a bachelor's from Rowan and an MPA from Villanova. And my wife and I, Katie, who also graduated from College of High School. We have two daughters, a third grader at Mark Newby, a three-year-old who's eager to begin her school journey. We're excited to see our children flourish in the community and the world within the foundation provided by our district. I'm running for school board because I am deeply passionate about public service. Although the Board of Education is a huge commitment, I'm excited at the opportunity to devote my time to improving the educational experience for our students. We're in a unique time with COVID, social injustice, and the departure of our superintendent. If I were to be elected to the board, it would come with the responsibility of making very difficult decisions, answering difficult questions, and navigating through unknown territories, all of which will have significant outcomes on the shape of our students' futures and the future of our district. I'm ready for this challenge and would have it no other way as it opens the door for our opportunity to analyze, critique, and make improvements to our already outstanding district. Aside from my professional life as a police chief, I have a longstanding community commitment service. I volunteered as a Little League coach, Chicago High School varsity baseball coach, currently on the PTA Board at Mark Newby Elementary. Volunteering my children's schools as a classroom helper, and I sit on various committees in the district, such as the Equity Committee, Return to School Steering Committee, Pandemic Response Team. And I'm very excited at the opportunity to allow my professional and personal experiences and expertise to serve the Collingswood community further. So thank you, everyone, for your time. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Roger?
All right, good evening. I'm Roger Chu, and I believe that every child should have the opportunity to achieve their dreams, regardless of their race, their family's means, or where they live in Collingswood. My campaign is based on three key issues, which are equity, communication, and leadership. A little bit about myself. I am a, well, I came into Collingswood in 2012. I'm a former middle school and high school math teacher. I've turned into an education researcher since then. I've studied a range of topics from education and juvenile justice facilities to early childhood literacy, to middle school teacher professional development, to even looking at remedial classes in California community colleges. I'm excited to get the opportunity to talk about my platform and answer your questions tonight. I want to thank CEAG for hosting tonight's forum. I want to thank my fellow candidates for joining me, and I want to thank all of y'all for making time to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Matt? He is muted. Jen, I think you need to unmute him.
Apologies on that. I clicked out of the screen, and now I'm ready to go. Great to see some familiar faces on here, and thank you, everyone. My name is Matthew Craig. For those of you who don't know me, pronouns are he, him, and his. And I've been a Collingswood school member since March, which was a great time to join the school board. Remember what was happening in March. I'm excited for this opportunity to continue to serve students and families in our community. I started out as a teacher 13 years ago, teaching sixth grade in a small town called Sunflower, Mississippi. And I've since dedicated myself to pursuit of education as equitable for all students on both a global and local scale. After leaving classroom, I've worked in a variety of roles, from New Jersey Department of Education to nonprofit leadership, to advocating for key education policies with state officials. Through these experiences, I've learned that my understanding of governance and ed policy, along with my relationship-building skills, are what make me a vital member of this board. When my partner and I picked Collingswood to start our family and put down roots, we have two boys, one in second grade at Newby, and another one in the second year in the new pre-K in town. We were drawn by the strength of the community. If elected, I look to provide solid leadership, accountability, and continue to pursue equity to ensure all Collingswood students receive an incredible education. Thank you.
Thanks, Fiona.
Hi, I'm Fiona Henry, and I'm a 25-year Collingswood resident. And I have three children who all went through the Collingswood Public School System. I'm a teacher by trade and personally continuing my education to pursue a master's in teachers of students with disabilities. But one of the things that I'm also equally dedicated to is that I've been an active board member for 10 years. And one of the things that draws me to that is that we live in a vibrant community, and that vibrant community really wants to be involved, and we're lucky to have that. I'm proud to be part of a board that has evolved to be more responsive to community concerns over the years. And board members have a tough job because they have to balance policy and finance and curricular concerns when making decisions. And sometimes those decisions aren't always popular, but it's paramount that all decisions put students first and also address the needs of all of us as really a school community. These are obviously uncertain times, and our schools have to be a source of stability in our community. And I'm really excited because I had a chance to talk to my fellow candidates, and they're all great candidates who seem dedicated to serving the board. And that being said, I'd like to thank CEAG for this opportunity.
Great, thank you. So we'll start with questions that we got in advance. And again, if anyone wants to chime in with questions in the chat, you guys are welcome to do that. And again, we will go alphabetical order, and candidates will have one minute to respond. So Kevin, we'll start with you. This one is about the superintendent. So as a new board member, you'll be tasked with looking for a new superintendent. What qualities and qualifications do you feel make a good fit for the Collingswood School District?
Yeah, so I think the qualities of a superintendent really need to be someone who is compassionate, someone who has a strong educational background, has a lot of experience, because it's certainly something we're going to have to navigate through. Our current superintendent and board have created a real culture here in Collingswood, and I think it's something that we need to build upon. And it's very, very important to find that right person and right match to be able to continue going forward in the direction we're going. I'm sure that many of the other educators in the room, me not being one of them, understand that what we've built can go away very, very quickly. So we need to find someone that can further the vision and mission that the board has set out and really continue with the programs that they've sought out and making the district a better place. So I think you need to find someone with compassion. You need to find someone highly educated and motivated and dedicated. As dedicated as the community members are here, we need to find someone representative of that. And I look forward to being part of that process in hopes that I get elected.
All right, if anyone else wants to chime in for 30 seconds?
Yeah, I'll chime in quickly here, which is to say that, you know, I agree with Kevin there on what qualities superintendent needs to have, but I also would say that the superintendent needs to be focused on equity. There are a lot of challenges coming up for a school district, including how to deal with elementary schools as the population grows. And that needs to be front-centered, equity needs to be front-centered in a new superintendent's view. Other thing too is a new superintendent needs to be skilled with communicating with families and supporting teachers through professional development. Thanks.
Ed, may I also chime in?
Do I?
Okay. So I feel that we need to find someone experienced, someone who is willing to work with the shared services situation that current board has built. We definitely need someone who values communication and, as Roger said, equity and also social-emotional learning. But most importantly, we need someone who is innovative and flexible because we need someone who's going to meet the needs of our district and move in a direction that's unique to Collingswood, not just do what they've always done in the past.
I'll also chime in to let you reset the timer. Thank you, but I agree. And I think I mentioned the solid foundation that we have here in town, and we need a leader that's willing to come in and grow all of that, but realize they have an opportunity to reshape and get us to a point where we are serving all the students the best possible way. And that's going to take somebody who is flexible. It's going to take somebody who understands this role and all that it entails and is willing to take on the challenges as they come up, many of them not seen. Willing to work with community, teachers, staff, stakeholders, school board members to get that job done.
All right, this next one, we'll go first to Roger. On the topic of special education. So like most New Jersey school districts, Collingswood schools operate with a segregated model for students with a disability. How would you promote meaningful inclusion in our district? By meaningful, we're not talking about PE or art being counted as the only inclusion piece. I mean, side by side with their peers in the general education classroom.
Right, well, first I'll start by saying that the current structure of our elementary schools, I think, leads to some of this segregation where quite, you know, the school, the school system has to kind of collect students of different types into one different school to maximize usage of resources, right? So you have special education services at one school, at one school, and that means that all the kids of that type go to that school. If we change the way that we structure our elementary schools, that helps us get to that place where we have more inclusion instead of just this feeling of warehousing or feeling of segregation. And so that's again why I think having a new superintendent who's really focused on equity is important there. On top of that, again, I go back to the idea of supporting teachers, having a superintendent who can support teachers, provide the professional development needed to really have kids flourish in an inclusion model, not just in classrooms by themselves, but with the general population.
I'd like to add on to that if possible. Thank you. And I agree, this is going to take a lot of levels of communication and working with teachers. I really valued the fact that a priority is being given to our students that have special needs, particularly during this time, and trying to bring them back to provide a learning environment that's most suitable for them. And I want to see that continue. I think our role as board members, it's our job to ask the superintendent what is being done to serve these populations and hold them accountable when their needs are not being met. So listening to community members, listening to this feedback, and encouraging them to do what is best for those kids.
Anyone else?
Yes, Fiona, if you're not going to jump, then I will. Special education, I mean, I think the achievement gap we're going to see as a result of homeschooling is going to be huge, especially for our special education's concern. And we need someone that's going to be committed to looking at that achievement gap, how we're going to make that up, and how we're going to have earlier assessments so that we're not going to have inclusion come in second grade and really turn someone's education upside down by moving them into school that late in their career that's going to follow throughout their career and then in the school district.
And it's okay, I would like to also add that, you know, obviously, inclusion is essential for students with special needs. And I know our district does a good job of trying to keep as many special students in district as possible. And the key to making it equitable is not just a focus on inclusion in academics, but also analyzing students' behavioral issues and special needs and integrating that into other aspects such as discipline and kind of taking a whole new school-wide approach to effective discipline and effective academics for students with special needs.
All right, thanks. The next one, we will start with Matt. So on the topic of sports facilities, the bond referendum did not pass. Our district is utilizing the capital budget to do ongoing repairs and maintenance on the 10 acres of facilities of the middle school and high school campus. How would you, as a board member, advocate for the physical wellness of our students and the opportunities that scholastic sports afford our young people? Do you have an opinion on reopening the pool?
On reopening the pool?
Yes.
As in like the, wait, the Roberts Well? I'm sorry, or is there a pool? This isn't like the pool on the roof or things like that, right?
Jen gathered the question.
That there was a specific question in regards to the pool, but there was also other questions in regards to the facilities as well. So that was a direct ask, it was about the pool, but I know there's a bigger question.
You can answer whatever piece of that you want to.
Sorry, I don't want to dodge the pool question, but I remember the bond referendum was one of the first instances that I really stepped up as a community member to lend my voice to what I thought was going on. And one of my first instances, actually hearing board members talk about something. And I remember having a very visceral feeling of my newness to the community being something that counted me out from having a voice in that conversation. And that was something that kind of guides me throughout my experience here is not wanting to create that, making sure that I'm listening to all community members. When I think about the sports facilities question, I know that as board, that's incredibly difficult conversation because it's locking our community into paying for something that is going to be an incredible benefit, but will come at a cost. And we have to weigh what comes with that. I think it's worth exploring, and it's worth providing our students with the facilities that are going to be safe and give them an opportunity to take advantage of things that their peers and other communities have. But I also want to make sure that we're not doing that at a cost that's going to be exclusionary to families that want to come here and live in Collingswood and access our school system. Shaking of the cell phone is very effective, Rhodes. Thank you.
I also want to jump in and say that I firmly believe that athletics is a key part of academics. I say this because as a teacher, I had students who I could just look at and think that this kid needs to play football or something, right? Like my school, when I taught, didn't have a football team. I could see the kid, whenever he had his size in, so focused in class, right? And so athletics is really important here. I think that building facilities, they should be thought of as a resource for the whole community, not just the school as well. And I think that will help defray some of the costs. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just jump over Roger's said and Matt as well. It really is a community decision, and it's got to be beneficial to the entire community. It's obviously very, very important to have athletics and facilities in the district that are going to help the children. But it also should be a community program, and it should be something that you see community and put on and make it a very back-and-forth conversation. And that's going to make you make a better decision that's going to better serve the community.
Yeah, and we live in a district where the, many of the facilities, the buildings themselves are very old. So there's ongoing work that is done and also needs to be done. And I think the best way to approach that is with long-range, comprehensive plans. Instead of, you know, doing things piecemeal, what can we come together as a community and put together to make something that is less ideal become ideal? As in terms of the fields and the facility, you know, what we have now is less than ideal. And at the moment, the only plan is to improve, make improvements piecemeal. And what we really need is a long-range plan for the entire district, all the different buildings and fields and spaces.
All right, thanks all. Just moving to the chat real quick. Rhodes, you got to note that your name might be blocking the time readout on your phone. So you might need to shake your phone vigorously a little higher up. And another question, and we left off with Matt. So Fiona, if we could start with you, this one is, the more time, effort, and training that you put in, the more impact that you will have on the board and for our students. How do each of you plan to juggle all of your responsibilities and then have the time necessary to put in for the board?
So training is essential for board members. There's a huge learning curve when you first come onto the board. And luckily, there are many opportunities available for training, training in the areas of leadership, training in the areas of working well to create a good relationship with your superintendent so that things run smoothly, and training for other things such as equity and communication. So there are many, many opportunities. New Jersey School Boards Association and the Camden County School Boards Association actually run monthly meetings and encourage us to go to those. And it's great to get the information when you go there, but it's even better to collaborate. So you do, as a board member, have to be very willing to put in the time to attend these various trainings that are available, but it definitely pays off.
I'd like to add that I'm lucky in that my, I'm steeped in education. That's my job. I'm an education researcher at a nonprofit that's focused on public schools and on equity. And so this is what I live every single day. And so I'm lucky in that my responsibilities, I believe, will directly support my work on the board. And I think I can be a strong board member because of that.
I also just want to share and have to shout out both Fiona and Beth Ann Coleman and Reagan, the board leadership and the staff, Dr. Aswell as well, for helping me transition in the middle of the year and come on as a board member. I mean, that has been incredibly helpful from an onboarding perspective. But then I think even just to this, this piece of training and learning, I think making a commitment to the board is committing to constantly growing and becoming better and a better understanding and keeping up to date with education policy and key decisions so that you can better serve students in the community.
And I would agree. You certainly get out what you put in, and I'm at a point where I'm fully committed to being and will put into the committee, the board. Otherwise, I would not be here. So I do say that it's very, very important to be cognizant of all the work that goes into it. I would look forward to the onboarding. I would have a lot more to learn than some of the other members, obviously not having a background in education. However, I would be excited at the opportunity to see something through a different lens for myself and to maybe be able to educate some of the other board members as well. So maybe give them some knowledge they didn't have with my expertise.
All right, thanks. We'll flip back to some of the pre-submitted questions. We had one on the topic of digital citizenship. There have been some troubling social media activity seen from the middle school and high school for the past couple of years. How do you think that we, as a community, and you, as a board member, could advocate for our students through all grade levels to reduce the likelihood of one of our young people engaging in dangerous and troubling behavior when online? And I think we are back to Kevin for that first.
Yes, this kind of ties into school security, cybersecurity, and really education for not only the students, but the families. There are resources out there, and there are people that will come teach you how social media can be dangerous and the ill effects that come along with it. And really, I think the school district, in my opinion, has not really taken full advantage of those resources and really educating more the parents, in my opinion, than the students on what social media platforms are out there, how they're being used, and how parents can monitor what their children are doing. It's very, very important to understand as a child what trouble you can get into by posting something you might feel is innocent or doesn't go anywhere further than where you posted it. So again, I would rely and I would push as a board member to look to rely upon those available resources that are out there many times for free for people to come into the school district and teach parents and students.
So I would jump in and say, my parents, I've talked to them before about how they raised me, and they said, you know, Roger, we can only raise you well and then trust you because you're your own person. I think this speaks to how we should educate our kids. Yes, we need to educate our kids to understand the dangers and potential issues around social media. We also have to teach them how to make decisions for themselves and make adequate decisions. We cannot possibly think to be able to police every single moment of a kid's day. So we have to teach them to make decisions that will help them navigate the tough social media landscape.
And I'll add to that, that when we do see kids falter and make mistakes, we need to use that as an opportunity to educate and support everyone involved. You know, if the person was sort of the perpetrator of the situation and also if someone was the victim of a situation, we need to support everyone and create a learning environment and to be able to restore people back into the school community.
I'll also say too, this is an opportunity to invest in social-emotional learning and teaching of empathy and compassion for students as they navigate around these spaces. We've sent Chromebooks home to almost every kid in the entire district and teaching them how to operate with kindness in these spaces can be beneficial. But that also has to be married with safety and teaching them to be safe because there's a lot that they are responsible, as parents, as teachers, as leaders, to helping our kids understand about the world that they're operating in and the consequences.
All right, thanks. We will go to, back to the chat, since we have some more questions there. And Roger will go with you for this one. So where do you stand on the existing neighborhood school model? Would you continue to have neighborhood schools for K to five? Would you consider grade-level schools or another model?
So I think that there are many different possible solutions to the fact that we're running out of space in our elementary schools right now. But centered to all that is the idea that we need to look at equity when we decide how to move forward with our current elementary school model. You know, Collingswood is less than two square miles. There's only about 2,000 students in Collingswood itself. And yet, if you look at the five different elementary schools, you get five different sets of outcomes. That's kind of speaking to this issue of equity. We need to make sure that all of Collingswood, every child in Collingswood, no matter where they live, gets what they need to achieve their own dreams. Whether that be two schools or grade-level schools or different schools, we need to look into that and with an eye towards equity to figure out what is the most equitable solution to expanding capacity and making sure we meet all the needs of every one of our children.
And so to add to that, it's obviously much more efficient if we could build a brand-new elementary school and, you know, or two, and have everyone there. Obviously, it would run much more efficiently, and we could address equity concerns easier. But that's not what we have, and we don't have the land or the finances to do that at this point in time. However, that could be something that, it should be something that is studied in the future. Is that something that the district could or is interested in moving forward to? The board did do a demographic study, and we are going to run out of our building soon. And perhaps some other option is available, like grade-level schools.
I'll add within here that, I mean, selfishly, I love being able to walk my seven-year-old to school, drop him off in the morning, and it's been something that I've appreciated about this town. But I understand as a board member that these are decisions that are bigger than me and just my family. This is leadership and being elected to represent the community. So I think it is looking at what is going to best serve all kids and making the decisions based on those factors. And that's the type of stuff that, things like the demographic study that Fiona mentioned and other information, like the data that Roger pointed out, so will really help guide our decisions there.
Yeah, and just to add on and echo pretty much everything everyone else has said. If equity is really what we're going to strive for, I believe the model we have doesn't work because of the diversity of the neighborhoods that we go to school. So if we really want to make meaningful impact, we'll change with equity. I think it's on your phone. Get a different model. It certainly isn't working the way that does. Very liking, being able to walk my child to school. I understand it might be an unpopular decision, but there are some of the hard decisions I referenced earlier that you'd have to make.
Right, right before the right before the Dunkin' Donut and then left and then right.
All right. So for the next question, we will start with Matt. Issue of charter schools. What is your position on charter schools? If an organization applied to open a charter school in Collins, would you be, would you be willing to support the application?
So I will say this to somebody who, when I worked at the Department of Education, I was in the office charter schools. I worked in the past, I opened charter schools in Trenton and Pleasantville, Atlantic City. I'll say this, for some students, charter schools provide a level of education and access and community that their districts weren't always willing to offer. I don't feel like that is a need here in Collins. But I think the strength of our, our public school and public, our traditional public school is, allows a lot of avenues to access for kids. Like yes, well, everything that we're talking about tonight, there's ways that we can improve and we can hold the leadership accountable to, to do those things. But I don't know, just seeing the ramifications of a charter coming into a community of our size and what that could potentially lead to from a financial aspect. I also know that as a board member, it's, it's not up to us on those, to make those decisions. And that is the decision of the Commission of Education.
I'd like to add that there are significant financial ramifications of charter school opening within a district of the organization I work for. We act, we've actually done analysis of what's called the stranded costs when charter schools open inside school districts. You know, if a charter school tried to open up in Coningswood and there were some support for it, I think what that signals to, to board education is to ask, what need is not being met? And how do we meet that need in our own schools? So I think we have to understand that if that ever happens here.
All right, for the next one, we will go to Fiona and we'll go back to the chat since we have some more questions in there. Our current superintendent was a huge supporter of LGBTQ students. In fact, the district was and is quite innovative with their policies. What as a board member, will you do to ensure that the new superintendent continues that work? And what do you plan to do as a board member to support this part of the school community?
So yeah, obviously, we should all, as a community, be very proud of, of the work that's been done and the support that is given to LGBTQ students. And again, that is, the key to that is equity. And really, as a board member, we need to look over all of our policies and see if there's anything hidden in those policies or anything that, that we don't, you know, see that we can adjust and make things more equitable. So I think looking at policies and continuing to strive forward and be in the forefront of that movement is essential.
Yeah, I would agree with Fiona. I think we are out front as far as that's concerned. And it really is an equity situation that you would be speaking about there. So a careful review of what we're doing, making sure that all of our policies are in alignment of that and other things as well would really speak to what we would need to do as a board member.
I think as board members too, in this time, particularly with bringing on a new superintendent, it's going to be important to ask those questions. How will they respond to a diverse student body, to a changing student body? That is, and continue into this, to live into our commitment to supporting students, whether LGBTQ or, or others, and making sure that they feel comfortable and safe. And I think as board members, it's our, it's our job to hold them accountable when they're, they're not doing those things and to find someone that is going to live into that.
I would echo the piece about equity. I mean, this is about equity in a sense of meeting the needs of all our youth. But it's also a question, I think, of, of how do we think about and how do we educate our youth? You know, growing up, I never got a history class in LGBTQ history. Right? It's about whose story are you telling? Whose story are you educating kids on inside of schools? I think equity says, let us learn all of our histories, not just some suck pieces. And I think that is key here to making sure that LGBTQ students are supported.
Thanks. We are back to Kevin and we have a question actually to Kevin directly that's in the chat. Can you address how you being police chief may affect your position on the board?
Sure. So obviously, my position as a police chief could impact my influence on the board. And really, it would be to my public service experience and public administration experience. I have a master's from Villanova in public administration. I have, I guess, a background in policy concerns. So I think it would be beneficial to me to be able to review policies, have an understanding of what those policies are and how it could affect the whole. So I think my public administration experience would be beneficial there. As far as any other influence, I'm, I'm a very objective person. I'm here on behalf of a parent of two children in the school district. And I would rely upon my professional experience to assist, but not be my main driving force for being here.
All right, thank you. So we are to, Roger, a question about district communication. Communication outreach to the community are one of the pillars of advocacy for the CAG. When insights as a community member, would you take with you as a board member to advocate for this important issue?
Yeah, so communication is one of, one of the key issues of my campaign. I, you know, I've talked into parents and to other families. I've basically gotten this sense that it's very difficult to get the information that you want when you need it from the district. It's not because the district isn't giving out information, but maybe because the information isn't arriving at the right time or isn't the correct information that the parent needs right then and there. I think one of the solutions, I think actually the key solution is that the district needs to hire a dedicated communications expert. There are many reasons why that, this should happen. One being that there are multiple different schools with multiple different communication needs and an expert can help coordinate that at the district level. Also, let's be honest, it's a time of social media and we need to understand and meet parents where they are. You know, when, there's also equity question, right? When communication is hard, when parents don't get the information that they need, it's the parents who don't have as much time that lose out, right? The parents who have more time on their hands are the ones who can go in and dig in more and figure out what they need. But it's the parents who don't have as much time on their hands who lose out when we don't have good communications.
I think I would jump in, Fiona, I cut you off. You were about to first was just going to give credit, I think, to CAG here for some of the initiatives that you all have pushed, particularly around getting board, board meetings online and virtual. And I think those things are where community voice comes in. We as the board need to listen and adjust and decide what we can do. I think also too, we, in this time of the pandemic, we saw communication have to shift and be very clear. And it needs to be, continue to be a area of focus for the board and for the district of making it, making effective, efficient communication.
So Fiona, if you didn't have anything, I'll hop in. I didn't want to cut you off. But okay, so I think as, as part of communication, a very important piece of that is active listening too. And that is a very important aspect of communication. And that needs to happen more often. The other part of that is communication really does need to be more clear and concise, more confined to one space. And communication as a whole can be better, could always be better. It's always something you're going to improve upon. And having a communications plan would help with that, following that, assessing that, and really finding a good way to connect to everyone would be the best for a communication plan, I believe.
So I was having some difficulty unmuting. I don't know why. So the community did express to the board several years ago an improved need for communication. So the board took the cue from the community and did create a three-year communications plan. Going forward, I think it's very important and I would push for this as a board member to see the elements of that plan implemented so that students, staff and community have confidence that not only are they well informed, but also that they have a voice. And with that voice, they need clear platforms for sharing ideas or resolving issues or voicing concerns or giving compliments. I don't know.
All right, thanks for the next one. We will start with Matt. How can we make sure that the district is meeting commitments to curriculum like the Amistad Commission?
So I think that as policies come down from the state, like the Amistad Commission was coming out to, to ensure that we are including the histories like Roger talked about and teaching, teaching our kids not just necessarily to learn history that maybe we receive, but those of a lot of, of other backgrounds and races. As a board, we're asking ourselves, are we in compliance with these things? And I think we have curriculum subcommittees that are asking those nitty gritty questions and getting those responses from, from the superintendent and holding them accountable. I think it's also important for us to advocate for, about to get joined here. It's, it's also important for us to be advocating and using our position in the community to make sure the community understands why changes are being made and why it's important for us to make sure we're being inclusive and hearing all, all different voices and histories. Thanks.
I'll actually jump in and tie this into a comment, which was a question about diversity and hiring and stuff. I do also think that making sure that, that we have representation across our staffing is important. You know, the, in 2019, Coningswood as a district was 60% white with a teaching workforce of 93% white teachers. That disparity is, is an issue in a sense of we don't have as much representation. It's representation, you know, kids can't see themselves in their own teachers. And I think that's important.
All right, thanks for this note. Next one, we'll start with Fiona. So on the topic of remote learning, has the COVID-19 remote learning in district communication changed or enforced what you believe is the necessary connection between home and school? What do you think that ongoing relationship will look like as schools progress into hybrid and the new normal?
So definitely the, the need for communications is more important than ever between home and school. And that's on all levels between, you know, the administration and the staff, the staff and the families and the staff and the students, of course. There's a lot of factors such as making sure the students have what they need to learn and also making sure that while our students are remote and even if they're in the building, that everyone's needs are being met and they are, they have emotional wellbeing as well. So communication is important to ensure any of these issues that arise, whether you, you know, don't have the technology you need or whether you're feeling some kind of stress and need counseling. It's going to be communications that get those needs addressed.
Yes, just very quickly, effective communication, I think, is crucial every list, every level of the district, especially from within the board. It promotes better understanding, can reduce the necessary conflict and helps build healthy relationships. And really now more than ever, that piece of reassurance and communication from the district, especially from the superintendent, as we saw going through this pandemic and the beginning, proved to be very, very crucial. And I think it's something that we need to focus on moving forward because it's going to continue for some time and it's really going to have an effect socially and emotionally moving forward. And it's something that the board needs to communicate how they're going to be committed to doing.
I think also as board members, we can, we can continue to hold and push, push leadership to be accountable. So the teachers feel confident in what it is that they're doing in their charge. And I think when teachers feel confident, not just in space, but how they're operating and what, what their charge is, the, the more the students feel that safety and I think the parents as well. I think when more that our, our teachers are can be responsive to the kids. And we're now seeing that right next to us every day that, that really helps instill confidence in the community.
I'd also add that, you know, we talk about coronavirus and this kind of hybrid model and things like this as just purely a negative a lot of times. But I think that there are also some, some positives. You know, I was talking to one of my former colleagues of mine and he's saying, hey, as a math teacher, as a, as a math department head now, I'm pushing my, my teachers to try to push students deeper in their understanding of questions because just asking them to solve a problem, they can find that answer online anywhere. But really trying to push them to understand the, where the question comes from and how to answer those questions, that's what this type of, this type of education is, is going right now.
All right, going back to Kevin, we have some more questions in the chat. So we'll return to, to those. So this one is for Kevin first. We're hearing a lot of talk regarding equity, but what specifically would you do? And how would you measure that success?
So I, I think that we could all probably agree that equity, equity is hard to wrap your head around and really measure the success of it. The Equity Committee has done a lot of work over the past year, year and a half, I'd say. And a lot of that is, has been, I think, good work in laying a foundation. What we need to do is take all that information we collected and find out what we want to do with it. I think that one of the, I guess, the faults of that committee is that we didn't have a clear direction. And it's, it's through the fault of no one that was involved. Me being a member of that committee, it was just that there's a lot to go over. And I think we as a district need to decide what's most important, what we can most dedicate our resources to moving forward to get some kind of tangible result out of that Equity Committee. I think even if we took any piece from it, anything we did as a, as a district would be beneficial. We just need, really need to nail down what that is, how it's going to be most beneficial and what we want to give most of our time to.
I'll add that the Equity Committee, you know, was interrupted by COVID, the regular meetings, but it is still an ongoing thing. The Equity Committee was a chance for members of the community to hear equity concerns directly from our students and discuss issues that have affected them. And we could even see equity being put into place during the COVID remote in terms of food service and giving kids technology. And again, emotional support. My belief is that the committee should definitely continue in whatever format best suits the situation and climate that we find ourselves in.
I saw the, the Equity Committee being a great example of community input and working with the schools. And I'd like to see that continue to be replicated on other topics. But specifically speaking with equity, I think it's a commitment to our understanding of language and training, focusing on diversity, equity and inclusion in this training in our schools for our teachers and our leaders. I think it's key. I think it's understanding the gaps that currently exist within our academics, but then also other factors around discipline, around other, other pieces and making sure that students across the board are receiving the education they deserve. It's not easy, not easy answers, but I'm excited to work towards those and.
I mean, this question is actually really important and I unfortunately don't have enough time to talk through all of it. But I do think a part of it is looking at proficiency rates. Not to say that we should be teaching to test, but that we should be using tests as a way to measure how we're doing in terms of equity, equity. But also on top of that, we also need to talk to the students, talk to the staff, talk to the community to see how they feel, do they feel safe? Is this school and is this community an inclusive, equitable place for people? And I think that's important.
All right, thanks. We will start with Roger for the next one. Again, we'll go with the chat. As a follow-up to the communications discussion, how do you think the district does with communicating with, with community members that do not currently have children in the district? Do you feel this is important? And if so, what strategies would you advocate for?
Yeah, so I'll say this, I actually don't have a child right now. And as I, I was looking into deciding whether or not I want to run for the board, I had a really hard time trying to find the information that I was looking for about the district. And that's actually one of the reasons why communications is one of the key issues for my campaign. Again, I think that one of the, the big strategies is to have a dedicated communications expert. I think that this is important also because of the equity piece to it. As I said before earlier, when it's hard to find information, it's the parents who have the time, it's the families who have the time to go digging and asking questions and to find the answers. And it's the other parents who don't have that time or don't have those resources that lose out. Having a dedicated communications expert is extremely important, both for current families and also for that equity piece.
Yes, and just to briefly add to that. I mean, I think that the, the board has done and the district has made some strides with trying to reach the residents. We either don't have children or a little longer have children in the district, but there's still considerable amount of work to be done in that respect. There are valuable stakeholders out there in the community that can offer some time, their talent to help our children and improve our district. And And I really think that having a communications plan and making that in the forefront would be important because there really is a lot of help out there and a lot is difficult to find, as Roger said. If you're not involved in the school and you're not getting all the communications, it's hard to dig in and find some of the stuff you're looking for.
And the key really is building relationships, opening up opportunities for people without students in the district to take part in some of the committees and activities that we have. And Kevin mentioned the word stakeholders. That that is key to really include people without children in the district as stakeholders and realize that as community members, they also have very valid concerns about the decisions that we make for the school.
I think this this time is showing us that, again, it takes a village to be educating and raising our kids. And I know that we have leaned on that. It's important that we're bringing in all aspects and parts of village. And as a district, we can make, we should be an absolute priority to make sure everyone better understands and is connected. It builds pride in what we're doing and connections to the future and just brings more responsibility for everyone to the collective education of our kids.
All right. To back to Matt, a question about homeschooled students. The Board of Education adopted a pilot program in 2018 that allows homeschooled students in grade six through eight to participate in athletic activities. What is your position on the inclusion of homeschool students in our school district? And do you support an expansion of the pilot program to include other grade levels and extracurricular activities?
So I think that this comes down to the choices of parents to do what they feel is in the best needs of their their children. And if they feel that the current district is is not providing those needs or not serving them, then I think that those are some questions that we have to answer. As far as inclusion within the community, I think particularly with extracurriculars, I feel like that is the least of some of the things that we can offer. I'd be interested to see how that pilot has been has been doing and looking into the study to inform my decision. I'll admit that I haven't seen it, but would want to know, like, are our students taking advantage of that? Do they feel welcome in doing so or recreating the type of culture within our athletics and our extracurriculars that kids that maybe aren't there during the day feel like they can access this? Is this a problem with our communications? Is it getting back to it? Maybe there could be some root issues that we would see by looking at these things. And as far as expansion, again, if this is something that parents are asking for and are looking for, and it's going to be serving the best needs of kids, I'm definitely willing to explore it and see how we can make it function in Collinswood.
And I think it was Roger who mentioned that it's important that we look at, maybe not so much the positives, but what changes we can make in response to COVID. And so I think we're going to see changes in traditional learning where students are in the building all the time. And so that definitely opens up the need to expand services and opportunities for homeschool students.
I agree. And that expansion should touch on communication and including stakeholders as well because you really need to be able to communicate again to those people who are not in the district. Obviously, that's the main focus of what the question is. And really get them to see that it's able to understand what programs are available and communicate clarity to them, how they can get involved, and what onboarding would work to make to make that program be able to be expanded.
And in the end, I do want to say that we're all doing this for the children, right? And so if this is a program that helps these kids in their journey, then yeah, we should absolutely do it.
All right. This will be our last question before we wrap up. And this will go first to Fiona. So from the chat, as a follow-up to the Amistad, the Amistad question, would you support a change of the curriculum to comply with New Jersey law? What do you foresee as changes, challenges in instituting this curriculum? How long should this take? Fiona, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. Collingswood residents really should be proud of the great job of regular curriculum development and updating that gets done. So we are also very responsive to complying with New Jersey law. So my guess would be that we would, I don't know about an exact timeframe, but I say that it would could be done within a curriculum cycle, which usually gets done over the summer or as needed. And we can and do regularly use our curriculum coaches to work with our teachers to be in compliance with New Jersey laws and update our curriculum regularly to meet the needs of our students.
Yes, obviously, there is a need to comply with New Jersey law. But I think as a first step of this, especially having a new superintendent, is to build that strong team between the superintendent and director of curriculum to really come up with ways that the district could move this forward. As far as challenges, I think the biggest challenge is going to be navigating through that collaboration and communication between that administrative staff that's going to be new or at least new to working together as a whole. How long it would take, I think that would depend upon how well the communication goes, how well the groundwork is laid out for that.
I also think too, just within policy decisions like the Amistad and Amistad proposal and policy to to make curriculum more inclusive and some of the specifics. And I'm not a curriculum expert, but I think it's critical that our next leader be open to exploring to like, how do I make more representation in what we're teaching so that kids, regardless of their backgrounds or learning, getting a full picture of of the history of our country and of the world?
I think it's also one of those really important kind of community issues. Education kind of as a concept is a little bit conservative. And what I mean by that is it perpetuates our history, right? And so I think we have to talk to the community when we think about changing, especially a history curriculum, to help explain and communicate what are the benefits? Why do we need to do this? Why must we do this? In order to get the community to understand and be behind any changes to our history curriculum.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for everyone that asked the questions and answered them. Even though I said we're going to definitely be wrapped up in an hour, and we are now at the hour mark, but I do want to make sure that we circle back to each of the candidates to give them one minute to speak to all of us. So again, we'll just do one minute each, and we'll go alphabetical order. So Kevin, if we could start with you. And you're muted.
You got me now?
Yep.
Sorry about that. So as a district parent, a volunteer, and a public administrator in town, I think I offer a unique perspective and combination of skills that allow me to be a very effective school board member. I have a great rapport with members of our community and feel that my ability to communicate across the wide spectrum will be beneficial in capturing the community feeling and what things could be improved upon in the district. Of particular interest to me are equity and diversity, communication and collaboration, transparency and accountability, governance, which I think I've hit on tonight. I don't have a background in education, as I said a few times, but I feel that the current board is well represented by educators and those with an education background, which teamed up with my experiences and strengths, I think, could be critical in picking a superintendent with the ability to move our district in a positive direction while being cognizant of the clear educational gap that would be left to deal with as a result of COVID. There's no more important time than now to have a diverse board, which can look through as many lenses as possible when selecting our next superintendent and moving our district in a positive direction. As we dictate how we recover from home instruction and what the landscape of our district will be for years to come, again, I think this is very, very important. Lastly, I just want to thank you all for your time and consideration. I'm hopeful that I'll have the chance to make meaningful change by being elected to the Board of Education. And in the event that I don't, I'm sure that my running mates will have that meaningful change and I'll continue to serve the district as a PTA member, and I'm looking forward to that.
All right, Roger.
Thanks for all the wonderful questions tonight. A little while ago, before COVID, I was visiting my mom, and she goes, Roger, my friend, she just retired, and she's having a wonderful time raising her grandchild. And then she looked straight at me, which is all to say, like, I don't have kids yet, but my mom's putting on the pressure, right? And I say this because when I think about having a child in the future and raising a kid here in Collingswood, I understand that if I want my child to grow up in a diverse, equitable, representative community, I have to start now. I have to be the change that I want to be, right? I have to be the diversity I want to see in our school board, in our community. And so that's one of the key reasons why I'm running, right? Because if I want my kid to grow up in that society, I have to put in the work. And I'm willing to put in the work. I don't have all the answers, but I'm committed to working with the community. I want to hear from you. You can learn more about me at rogerchew.com. And you can also reach out to me at roger@rogerchew.com. So looking forward to hearing from everyone.
All right, Matt.
First off, just thank you to everyone at the Collingswood Educational and Advocacy Group for putting together this platform, providing this space and hosting it. I enjoyed hearing from fellow candidates and questions from the community. Look forward to continuing these conversations in the future, virtually or if you see me masked up in the middle of town. I, we have an opportunity in front of us to rebuild and improve the systems we've historically used to serve students. Back to normal is something we probably say on a daily basis, but unfortunately, normal was not enough for too many of our students. The next superintendent of Collingswood will be taking over a district with a solid foundation for learning, growth, and comfort, or learning, continued growth. But as they enter a historic moment, they'll only guess at the impact of student learning, growth, and comfort. Next leader will be charged with healing students, teachers, and community trust in the school system and have the opportunity to create a more equitable approach to learning. I look forward to working with the new superintendent to carve out a path and understand, carve out that path and understand as my role as a board member to hold them accountable if we fall short. I've appreciated the way that this community has rallied together during this time. It's made me proud to be a part of Collingswood, proud to serve on this board, and I look forward to doing so in the future. Thank you. Hopefully.
All right. So I, as I said, I'm confident in the, that the board is in good hands because I think that the candidates that are running all seem to be running for good reasons and seem like they have a great commitment to this. So I'm, that makes me happy, being a current board member, that it seems like it's going to be in good hands no matter what the outcome. I hope that I can personally offer my experience and continuity during this time of change and all these transitions. Collingswood is a district that's often in the forefront of instructional design and best practices, even things that go beyond regular academics. And as a board member, I think the thrust needs to be that we continue our trajectory towards improvement in communications, community relations, and student voice to really enhance our priority of student achievement because that is the bottom line, student achievement and well-being. So I hope that I can offer that stability and commitment to the community.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Thanks to our candidates for being here tonight. We, again, really appreciate you running for office, especially at this trying moment. Thanks for everyone that came to this meeting to hear from the candidates. Don't forget to vote, and we meet third Tuesday of every month. We have a meeting, you know, as everybody else is on Zoom recently. You can find the recording of this event on our page, which Jen said in a day, but knowing Jen, it'll be much sooner than that. And again, thanks to everyone that attended to our candidates and to people that came to listen or to ask questions. We appreciate you. Thanks so much. Have a good night. Take care.
Thank you all.